Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for joining our meeting. And it's hard to believe that our last meeting was March 10th, right before all of this happened, our last in-person meeting. It seems like forever ago. But here we are. So I'd like to call it an order, the May 12 Sherburne School Committee Meeting. It's 5:02 and we're going to get started. The first thing we're going to do is we're going to take any public comments. So before we get started, I'm going to kind of lay out the groundwork in case people haven't joined on the call before. The way this runs is since we're under an order from the governor about COVID-19, we're allowed to conduct our meetings via Zoom, and it satisfies our open meeting law. We still do have a public comment section. That being said, if you have a comment to make, there won't be a dialogue back and forth. It will simply be a comment. And after that point, you will be muted so that we can continue on with our meeting. And Sherburne School Committee, we're going to run this the same way we did on the joint. When we have a vote, we'll just take everybody off mute. Otherwise, if you'll raise your hand or somehow indicate to me either on the side or something that you wish to be recognized, and then I will call on that person. So with that being said, let's get started with comment. And anyone who has a public comment, and Dawn, if you'll help me. And also remember in your vote, you have to state your name so that the person who is transcribing the minutes will have an easier time to write them down. So does anyone have any public comment before we go ahead? You see any, Dawn?
No hands raised.
Okay, all right. All right, so then we're going to move on. We have our CSA co-presidents. I see Hannah on there. So Hannah, if you want to unmute and give us an update about Pine Hill, because we haven't had one for a while. We worked at school up until a point. And so maybe you can just give us an update about CSA, which the kids really miss, the Friday meetings and the things that you all contribute to that.
Yeah. Hannah Ireland, CSA co-president. Molly and I met last week to sort of try to wrap up the year. And we met with our treasurer, Heather. And it looks like we're going to be either a little bit above or just even with our budget. We didn't get to do our spring fundraiser or the luau and all of that. But with the success of our other events and some leftover money from the auction, we're about even. And maybe we'll be like a little bit over. So that's good. We are busy trying to fill next year's positions. We have a couple open, some big ones. Tara Horahan and Royal Abrams are going to be taking over as co-presidents. So that's exciting. We've been doing a lot of talking and explaining how we're going to figure this out next year. Molly and I will probably help out quite a bit at the beginning of the year just to sort of transition and, you know, make it smooth. We've also been brainstorming some creative ideas for fundraising for both, you know, Monster Mash and stuff like that, and also for the auction. Just because we don't know what it's going to be like. And we want to be able to be sensitive to people's finances but also be able to provide fun stuff for our kids. So we're working on that. And what else? Oh, we have our CSA scholarship for seniors. We have a couple of entries. It's an essay contest. And we're going to be voting on that at the end of this week. And then we give the prize in June. So I think that's it.
Does anybody have any questions for Hannah? So if not, I'd like to say, Hannah, that I did that. I was a co-president for a term. And it's a lot of work, but I have to say, the reward is great because you can see right when your kid gets home, when they had a program and you know that your money helped go to that. So I want to thank you all for all the hard work because you have been very beneficent on everything that you did for fundraising. And you made it fun for the kids. And you raised money. So all the way around, it was just a great result. And I know we're missing all these programs here at the end because what you do is very enriching. And without the CSA support, Pine Hill couldn't have as many enriching activities for our children. So thank you, and thank you to Molly, too.
Sure. All right.
All right. Thank you, Hannah.
Yeah.
Okay, so now we'll move straight into the reports. Dr. Brown, I'm going to have you go first for the principal's report.
Excellent. I just unmuted myself. I recognize as parents and school committee members, you've received lots and lots of information as our teachers have moved from Phase 1 to Phase 2 to now Phase 3 in the Remote Learning Plan. But I did want to publicly recognize that the Pine Hill educators and support staff have risen to new professional heights since school closing on March 13th, before the state and our school system officiated a plan for remote learning. And our teachers were already out of the gate forging ways to connect with students through Zoom or Google Meet for class meetings, et cetera. The social and emotional... The attention for social and emotional learning and care has been very impressive. Our educators and support staff have been committed to learning a host of new resources and technology applications. And I keep thinking of little opportunities for silver linings. And the tools that teachers use for focused and engaged learning will be stronger in the long run. I wanted to also give a shout out to Ms. Ryan, our librarian, and Ms. Hodge, our music teacher. Through them, our community connections have been as strong as possible in this remote learning time through the all-school meeting and the opportunity for social connection. And a little bit of frolic not lost on the Pine Hill community as we give virtual hugs and see one another's pets and connect levels. Behind the scenes, in addition to supporting teachers and their collaboration so that they can learn from one another, we've been busy, our administrative team has been busy recruiting and getting ready to hire. As you are probably aware, we have some retirements and some staff changes. So we're currently posting and recruiting for kindergarten, first grade, physical education. And one of our admin assistants in the front office is retiring. I am assuming our superintendent, a little later on, will speak about Mr. Karns's news? Okay, so I will. Mom's the word. I also wanted to just let you know, our teachers and many parents who've reached out to me for formal or informal reasons, I'm hearing a lot of people putting their heads together to come up with ideas for how we can continue the Pine Hill way of celebrating our students. So we're really looking behind the scenes, ways that we can recognize our 5th graders as they matriculate to middle school, welcome new kindergarten, orient new kindergarteners, who will be meeting probably virtually initially and, heaven willing, in person a little bit later on. But lots of things go in the scenes as we're organizing for placement and building next year's schedule. And obviously, none of those things have stopped. And we're trying to learn from everything that's currently going on. And to, I think our key word next year, we're going to have to get the word flexibility in our Pine Hill promise somehow because we've all meted to be extra flexible. But I just wanted to assure you that all of those structures behind the scenes are in place. Jim Karns and I meet with every grade level team every week. Specialists, the special ed department meets weekly. So there's a lot of collaboration. It just looks like this. So any questions about remote learning? I'm happy to speak to where we're at and what our charge is. I just didn't want to duplicate information that I know you've received from our superintendent's office.
Anybody on school committee with a question for Dr. Brown? Go ahead, Amanda.
I don't have a question. I just wanted to thank you and everyone so much because what you all have been doing is extraordinary. And I know that your teachers are doing it while they're trying to teach their own kids at home and juggling all kinds of things and working before the kids get up and working after the kids go to bed. And it's just all been extraordinary. Like, there's so much richness coming at us every day that I feel bad that we just can't do it all. But it's all so great. So thank you so much. And please share our things with everyone on your team.
I will happily do that. Thank you. As you know, every family's sweet spot is very, very different depending on their circumstances. So too much, too little, too hard, too easy, you know. But the parent feedback solicited and just through good old fashioned reaching out through our community connections has been very valuable to myself and of course, our educators. So thank you for your support.
Nancy?
Yes. I had a couple of parents call and ask about some of the policies.
Teacher, I'm watching. Is it a kids, parents of kids, get a brain on the secret engagement? Teachers, I hear parents with twins who are in the same brain. Which is engage a lot to them. So I didn't really...
Nancy, there's something, I think, wrong with your audio.
Yeah, it sounds like you're in a cartoon. Oh, it's bubbly.
Angie? Yeah. I'm getting a Wi-Fi extender coming next week from Amazon because we're having Wi-Fi issues.
I do think that if I heard the first part of your question, Nancy, that I'm actually going to talk to some of the remote learning questions that people might have. And so is Beth with me in the superintendent update. And then Barb can chime in, too, if that's helpful.
Yep, okay.
And then maybe that audio thing will work out. I just started to hear you and then it broke up.
Okay.
So we'll try that. And if it's not addressed, then we'll circle back around before we go on to the ever-exciting warrant reports. So again, and I know, Amanda, you were speaking from experience because you're a teacher and a parent. So you're trying to teach not only your kids, but you're teaching the seniors where you teach. So it's different. But I do have to say that my son's class, it's been great. I sent Dr. Brown an email just wanting... And I have to say, the extras, I've really enjoyed. I've done drawing with Mr. Berry online because I'm not an artist, and I really did enjoy that. So I think all the extras, too, that Pine Hill's put out there has been a lot of fun. So let's move on then to the superintendent update and the assistant superintendent update. And Dr. Kio, I'll let you shift over to Beth because you all probably be complimenting each other. So I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you very much. And thank you, Hannah, for coming to the meeting tonight and for everything that you guys do with the CSA. And Barb, for your update as well. I agree with Amanda that our teachers have really done an amazing job under very trying circumstances. I think you captured it well, Amanda, as you know, and Beth knows, and if there are any other teachers who have young children tonight know, it's really, really hard to teach and co-teach your children. So it's been a big ask of our teachers. And I think that they've really stepped up. And I don't think any of us in the school department would say, "We've got it down." I don't think we're sitting back and now patting ourselves on the back and saying, "Yeah, we're all set now." It's been a real, real challenge. The pandemic is a dilemma. And by that, I mean, there aren't any really easy answers. And to that end, we had some great parent Zoom meetings last week. We actually had four of them. I did those with Beth. And we did our best to answer questions from parents. Because this is an evolving situation, there really aren't easy answers. And I had a great conversation with a colleague of mine who's retired. And he's just amazed at what's going on in education because this has never, ever come up, nothing even close to this. I tried to run some possible close kind of challenges, and he's like, "No, not even close." And I agree with him. It's just a big part of the challenge is that you feel like you're working twice as hard but accomplishing half of what you'd like to. And that goes for pretty much anyone involved in the schools and probably school committee, too. So it's been a challenge. But I thank you, Barb, and your staff for their hard work and of course, all of our teachers across the district because we know how much time and energy you guys are putting into it. Along those lines, we will have a parent Zoom meeting next week as well. So we're going to try and do these more frequently just because I think parents benefit from hearing about what's going on kind of from the top. And so we're going to provide these opportunities. It will be next week on Wednesday from 3:00 to 4:00. And, you know, all are welcome. We want to probably maintain the same format where people can enter their questions during the chat. But we're also going to ask parents to write down what they're thinking in advance, kind of like they do for challenge success events. And that way, we have an idea of what's on people's minds in advance. So I'll be sending something out probably Thursday about that meeting that will take place next Wednesday. One of the things that Barb alluded to that I realized since we haven't had a school committee meeting, I'm not sure every school committee member knows this, but I hope so. We have actually asked Jim if he'd be willing to step up for the interim assistant principal job at Chickering School over in Dover next year because he has been doing such a fine job this year at Pine Hill. He seemed like the most logical person to reach out to. And the reason there's a vacancy there is because Deb Reinemann, who's the current assistant principal at Chickering, is stepping into the principal's role. So these are tough decisions that we've made about interims. But again, this is due to this really evolving and uncertain situation. If you think for a minute, if you wanted to conduct a principal search in the middle of this, would your pool be the same pool you would have if you did not have a pandemic going on? In other words, would people potentially pull back and say, "I'm not applying for another job during these uncertain times. The economic uncertainty makes me nervous. I have a family and need a secure position." Does that result in a possibly changed pool? And I've concluded that it has. And that's why we've gone to some interim positions for this coming year, FY '21. And we're very, very fortunate that we have people in-house who can step up for these roles. So Jim, I know he's not here this evening. He's not feeling well. He would typically be here. And I just want to extend my appreciation to him for what he's done during this past six to seven weeks and for what he will do as we transition back to Allison in roughly a week and then beyond next year. So that's a one-year appointment. And, you know, we'll see how it goes from there. I wanted to let the school committee know that we are thinking a lot about next year. And again, the big challenge is that we frequently don't know what the guidance will be from the governor or the commissioner. And I don't mean this in a disparaging way because I actually am really, truly grateful to the hard work that they and their folks have done. But the fact of the matter is, there are so many factors to consider that we often, they can't always give us guidance a month before something's changing. So for example, on May 18th, we're supposed to hear about more significant changes in the state in terms of reopening the state. But we haven't really yet. And it's the 12th, so that's six days away. So how do you plan for something if you don't know what they're going to allow or not allow? And that is our big challenge, right? As we start thinking about next year, how do we know how many students they will allow in a classroom? How do we know how many students will be allowed to ride on a bus? Will buses be allowed? Will athletic activities be allowed? Will recess be allowed? Will people be required to wear face coverings in schools? Will they be able to serve food? All sorts of really... Will remote learning count again? Because this was a special circumstance that they actually counted remote learning. In the past, it would not have counted as instructional time. So unless you had special, you know, dispensation. So we have a lot to work on. And to that end, we are developing a task force. So like the Start Times Task Force, it will have subcommittees that will focus on specific areas that are of importance to us. For example, as I mentioned, the transportation question. And these, by the way, dovetail, right? So transportation dovetails with our scheduling, for example. We would have a committee that would look at our scheduling because we have to decide what our schedules will look like based on the feedback and guidance we get from the state. The state says you can only have 10 kids in a classroom, and we don't have enough classrooms to accommodate all of our students. We may, in fact, have to come up with another model, whether it's a half-day-in, half-day-out, or one day in, one day out, or one schedule for the secondary level and another schedule for the primary elementary level. All of those things have to be worked out. And like the Start Times Task Force, if each subcommittee has a purpose... We haven't nailed down specifically what those subcommittees are. We're actually going to be talking about that tomorrow with the full leadership team for the district. But like the Start Times Task Force Committee, there'll be a point person who's responsible for reporting back to this task force about the progress they're making as they look into these potential issues. For example, there should be, I would argue, some kind of committee that looks at the health regulations, whether they're from DPH or from the Board of Health. Are we going to take the temperature of every student as they enter the school? Are we going to use thermal thermometers? I've heard there are thermal cameras out there that can tell whether or not somebody has a fever. What would we do if somebody was to come down with some kind of symptoms that fit with COVID-19 during the school day? This health committee would then look at all of those possible scenarios, see what's out there, see what's being done, and then make recommendations to me, the administration, ultimately, the superintendent, and thus, the school committee, or eventually, the school committee, as to what we would recommend our reopening look like. We're starting to get some really cool guidance in this regard. For example, this morning, I was on a conference call with four administrators from Europe. Two from Germany, one from Copenhagen, and one from South Korea. And so all international schools, so a little different. But they have had to grapple with this stuff before us, right? Because their openings are happening now. So this is really, really helpful to us. We're getting all sorts of really cool information. And so we're getting that ball rolling. So I wanted to be sure the school committee knows that we're on it and that our families know that we're on it and we're working on it and we're going to continue to work on it. It isn't going to be easy. I suspect we're going to be really busy this summer. I suspect we're going to, at some point, be leaning on the school committee for a meeting in the summer when we typically would not have one because there'll be things we have to discuss. So that's the way it is, and we're all in. And I'm thankful for the team that I have in that regard because we've got some good people who are really working their tails off. As for the end of the year, I also wanted to mention that we know that people may have belongings in the school that will probably have to be packaged up and made available for students. We know that that's going to have to be arranged for. And we also know that people have our things that we're going to want back before the end of the year. We're working on that. We're working on that right away. We know we still have some time, but we want to make sure that we do that safely and consistently. And so you will be hearing more about that soon. Now, to speak to Nancy's question, I didn't... Maybe you could ask it for us now, Nancy? If your mic is working and then... Because I was going to have Beth weigh in on kind of the remote learning and how that's working thus far.
Can you hear me now?
Perfectly.
Okay, great. So I think it's a couple of part questions. But one is, I guess, is there a different policy in teacher engagement between elementary and middle school? Secondly, what prompted the call was a parent, a group of parents, and someone elected to call me and said, "We're noticing differences between grades of teacher and great engagement at the elementary school level, and we're noticing it within one grade level." You know, so what is, you know, is there a guideline? You know, what is the guidance that teachers are given for engagement? And when I say engagement, I guess what I'm talking about is the interaction through like a media like this, like a Zoom meeting, not homework. You know what I mean? Just like the level of engagement.
Do you want to answer that, Beth? Or because I'm happy to as well, but...
Yeah, I'm happy to. And Dr. Brown, raise your hand as well. So how about I start? And then, Dr. Brown, you pick up where I left off? Okay. So thank you for the questions. So at the elementary school, the expectation is that every classroom teacher Zooms with their students four times per week. And that can look differently. It could be an early, you know, a morning meeting from responsive classroom where they get together and they do an activity and then talk about the work for the day. It could be an interactive activity later in the day. It could be a mini lesson. It could be a small group where they're processing, you know, parts of a story. It could be extra help for math homework. And then on Friday, as you know, we have the sacred all-school meeting. So that counts as the fifth kind of touch point for students during the week. At the middle and high school level, the expectation is that for every class that a child has, which ranges between 6 and 8, that they have one Zoom session per class per week and then access to office hours. So the difference there is they have numerous teachers for single subjects, whereas our elementary teachers have to plan for all four subjects, including literacy, math, science, and social studies. And so it looks a little different because the models and, you know, the expectations of teachers at all three levels are different. In terms of how the Zooms are used, I mentioned that a little bit, that it ranges from teacher to teacher. Really, the expectation from the beginning and the guidance from the commissioner as well as, you know, local psychologists and child experts and countries, you know, as Andrew mentioned, that are ahead of us in this model is really to focus on the student engagement and the connectedness piece and giving students an opportunity to interact with their peers and the teacher. Just recently, there was the COVID-19 hierarchy of needs that was floated around based off of Maslow's hierarchy of needs. And you'll notice that, you know, 90% of the triangle is all about food, shelter, safety, connectedness, love. And then only at the top is learning. So really, you know, the number one thing during a crisis like this that everybody is recommending is that connectedness piece. So that's where we started with our philosophy around Zooms, recommendations from everyone, is to make them just about engaging and less about content. However, since we've started to move forward into Phases 2 and 3 and moving forward with the curriculum, we have given teachers some leeway as to they can bring content and curriculum into their Zoom meetings. However, it shouldn't be new information because we can't assume that students can log on to a Zoom session Wednesday at 10 o'clock. Every child, every family has different circumstances. And we want to make sure that all students have access to the learning. So while students might learn about a concept from reading about it in a textbook or watching a Brain Pop video, they can process it as a class afterwards. But again, the lean is really towards the social-emotional component first. The other piece that I wanted to just mention because this came up quite a bit during our Zoom conferences last week with parents, expectation is four Zooms per week. You know, obviously, the length of those Zooms is going to range depending on the grade level. You know, you can't have a kindergartner sitting and Zooming for 45 minutes. So teachers have really been doing a lot of... Within their grade level teams, talking about what's appropriate, how best to use that time. And the other piece that came up last week is how... For every one parent, and I think somebody already mentioned this, for every one parent that says, "This is too overwhelming. I can't manage all these schedules. I can't homeschool my child and take care of my family and do my job." There's a parent that says, "We want our children Zooming with teachers six hours a day, all day long." Well, that's not healthy for a number of reasons. But I also want to make sure that we're not equating time on a screen with a teacher to learning. Learning, as we know from the Academic Innovation Committee, learning, as we know it from the Portrait of a Graduate... Learning, as we know from the Academic Innovation Committee, learning, as we know it from the portrait of a graduate. Is not sitting in rows and absorbing information from a teacher and regurgitating it on a test and quiz. That's not learning in the twenty-first century. So what we've been focusing on in the brick and mortar buildings has been student-centered learning. And making sure that kids have voice and choice in what they do, that they can pursue topics within the curriculum of interest to them and really dive in deep. And then be able to show their learning in new and different ways as opposed to just paper and pencil tests. So that being said, the remote learning model has basically forced us out of the traditional teaching and learning box. It's blown up the box. The box is gone and forces into new thinking. And so you're going to see a mix of some, you know, teacher-directed teacher conversations on Zoom. But you're also going to see a lot of independent student-driven voice and choice work at home that again speaks to the curriculum that we're trying to meet. But also is, is, is adhering to our philosophies around twenty-first century learning. So that's my two cents. Dr. Kio and Dr. Brown, feel free to add in and I'm happy to answer anything that wasn't answered.
Well, the one thing I will add to that, Beth, that I think is really important, and this will be hopefully helpful to you, Nancy, in terms of. In getting information back to families. And that is that Beth did a really exceptional job of. Capturing the questions that continually came up. And adding those to our frequently asked questions list. I don't know if you've had a chance to put that online yet, Beth, but I know that's the plan.
Yeah, it's partially up.
Okay.
Yeah. Growing.
Well, and the list will keep growing and, and unfortunately, because we'll have a meeting next week and we may hear new developments. Because after all, we just started the remote learning phase three last week. But, but hopefully that's helpful. Barb, were you going to add something to that?
I'm just so thankful, Beth, that you went first because you gave such a big picture response. Yeah, are the guidelines and expectation are. You know, super clear. Obviously, teachers have within their different styles, different ways of getting there. Particularly with our younger grade levels, we're not, I, I'm making a, a, a very generalized statement here. But I've heard from many teachers that some of our younger learners are. I don't know if it's shyness or intimidation, but it's hard, we're not getting the participation from the big. Screen zooms with, with twenty-twenty-two participants. So the teachers are maybe having quick whole class check-ins. And opting more for smaller groups. And I, I think that's definitely the trend in K-one and two. Wherein, wherein the older grades, you, you're likely to see everyone start together. Maybe they break out into. Different chat rooms based on the book discussion or, or, you know, some, some interest-based topic. But, but, so the teachers are approaching it differently. Marlene, I'm not going to put you on the squad. I'm just waving to you. But I know if I look at Marlene's schedule, she's got a couple whole group, many small group, and then she allocates Fridays. And, and some pieces of other days for quick individual check-ins with kids. So. Particularly our younger teachers are finding that that balance elicits more participation and voice from our students. In the video conferencing.
This, this, this actually speaks to a, a bigger problem that we're going to have to confront. And that is that if we have to continue with remote learning. How does a teacher form relationships with kids? Right out of the gates using this model? And that is, that's concerning to me. And that, that actually is not an original idea. It came from a friend of mine who's a English teacher, a social studies teacher in. In Wayland. And he said, I just don't know how, how I, how I will form those relationships with kids I've never met. Right out of the gates using Zoom. Because Zoom, as Beth mentioned, I'm sure you know this, Amanda, as a teacher, is very two-dimensional. Right? You, it's very hard. If, if you watch a, a teacher like, I don't know. Fill in the blank, a very energized teacher. They are all over the place. And these kids are moving over next to this kid because this kid's itchy. And they want to make sure they're on top of that. They're keeping the questions going, keeping the whole thing moving. You can't do that with Zoom because if Beth wanted to talk right now, there's no way. And I know that we were taught to go one at a time, but in a real vibrant classroom, it's hardly like that. It's active. And so we, we're, that's why I say we're, we're working twice as hard and producing probably half as much as we could. And I think that's really important that we articulate that to our families because. I, I, as I said to the parents last week, and I'll say it again next week. Let's be honest, this is far from ideal. We're not happy either. We didn't want to go to remote learning. We weren't looking forward to remote learning. We had no plans to do it. We just decided on March thirteenth that we were closing the schools and then a week later we were running. So, but what we are learning, I hope, as we evolve through this process is that there are actually some silver linings. And some benefits from this model. And as Beth said, one of them is having to kick some of their learning. So when we lament the fact that I never see kids out in the neighborhood like we did when we were growing up, that play was actually learning. It's really important to, to child development. And so we're starting to see some of that different kind of learning that's also equally important. So I think it's, it's a conversation that's not going to end. We're going to be having this discussion. As long as we have remote learning, we're going to be having this discussion. But I would contend that the folks who are doing six hours of instruction on Zoom are not accomplishing any more than we are. I doubt it. Because I doubt that I, there's only so much a human being can take before it's just like. So it's a really challenging thing and I'm glad you brought it up, Nancy, because it's something we have to continually discuss. And I think that the surveys that we did and, and the surveys that will come in the future are really critical to telling us. How we're doing with that. And that means surveying of teachers and faculty and students. How are we doing with this? Sorry, Beth.
No, and I just, one more thing to add too is we all are well aware of this, but we had no preparation, no time to jump into this. So our teachers have all created their own wheels and they're sharing their wheels with their grade level teammates to the best extent possible and tweaking them. But they've been triaging and just working nonstop since this all started. Dr. Brown and Mr. Carnes have started to build in opportunities for teachers. In addition to everything else they're doing, to come together and start sharing ideas across grades about what's learning. This is the first time that they've kind of almost gotten to stop or at least slow down a little bit and, and figure out, you know, what this train is that just hit them and. And how to move forward. But I know moving towards the summer, there's going to be a lot of conversation about what practices work online, which ones don't. I'm already investigating a blended learning class that I'm hopeful that most of our educators will take. And in looking at blended learning, you know, there's a lot of research out there, especially at the college level, because this is not new to them. Which says that, you know, it's much like the flipped classroom model where students should be gaining the information and the content. On their own independently through videos and reading. And then the time together should really be about processing that. So that teachers can check in as Ms. Custodial is doing with small groups and really see how kids are doing as opposed to looking at a screen of twenty-two. So there's, you know, as Dr. Kio said in the beginning, this is a work in progress. We're by no means perfect. But we have a lot of discussion and sharing to do between now and August.
Does anybody on the school committee have any questions for Dr. Kio or Beth?
Okay, with that being said, in the report, in your packet is a warrant report, which is just the. Bills that I signed on, off on, and that's contained in there. Anytime you want to see them, you can. Of course, town hall is closed now, but you can make arrangements and if you so desire, they will make them available to you. Next, we're going to move to our fiscal year twenty-one budget update that Dawn's going to present.
Yes, thank you, Angie. And I have to thank Angie because she's been meeting us in the parking lots to sign the warrant. So it's become a chore and it's tough to figure out how we get our signature. So thank you for your flexibility. We'll be reaching out to you on Thursday morning for another parking lot meeting.
We clean our pens off in Angie.
Yes. Take this opportunity to update you a little bit on fiscal year twenty-one budget. Capital is something that has been transpiring since our last meeting. Angie and I were both reached out to by the Sherburne Capital Committee. About six, I think it was four to six weeks ago, that at that point in time, they were looking at doing a, a smaller version of their annual meeting. In June and then a larger one in the fall. And so they were asking all the town departments. What capital projects would, would be necessary to approve in June and what could be put off into the fall. So we'd already started having that thought process when, in the following weeks, they actually completely moved all of town meeting. Until late summer, early fall. What that means for the school is, as you know, most of the capital projects. The timeline that we complete them is in the summer. So we had already, had, had already pulled two of the projects saying that we definitely wanted, wanted them on the June meeting. And in addition to that, we proposed to the town different ways that we could fund it if they wanted to pull those off of capital. And that's actually with the postponement of the annual meeting until the fall, we're moving forward with funding two of your projects. With available funds so that we can complete in the summer. The first project is the heat isolation valve replacement. If you remember, we were able to look at that project a little differently. It's going to come in at like under ten thousand. We did put it on capital for ten thousand. But with the closing of the school, we do have some maintenance cost savings that we're utilizing to take care of that project. And we actually have the contractors slated to begin, actually on Monday. For, to go into the, that wing and replace those valves that we've been concerned with that are original to the building. The second project that we knew we wanted to do this summer was the, the counter and sink areas in the C wing. We had a, we did a prototype of that in the teacher's lounge this past year. So we sort of knew what we needed to take care of. And we had a quote that would be less than twenty thousand to do the four classrooms. So we, in, in the order to be able to do that this summer, we're proposing that we use your building rental fund to cover that cost. So I think if you look back at your revolving fund statement that we presented in March, you have about. Sixty-five thousand dollars in that fund. And we still haven't recorded the fifteen thousand dollars of rental income from Sheeta. So twenty thousand dollars would not be a huge impact to that fund, but it's a huge impact to the school in order to get that work done this summer. And in fact, we've already started placing the orders for those cabinets and sinks. And we expect that to be started also in late May and completed within like two weeks in June. What that does is it sets up our custodians to get a lot of that capital work out of the way. So then they can go in and do their summer cleaning and prepping without the interruptions of other contractors in. So I think it worked out well that we had already had this thought process because then. When the town did postpone their annual meeting, we had a plan B that we could quickly enact on. And so that is an update on the capital. So your third, on the ones that we're doing now, your third project was the HVAC. Replacement in the computer room. We are, we'd already said that's fine to wait to do that next year. So that'll be in the fall. Town meeting. So that'll be your only capital project that will go before the town when that meeting happens. Any questions on the capital?
Okay.
For that HVAC, does that get pushed to the following summer or does it get done over maybe one of the breaks?
Yeah, we're thinking we could probably do it over one of the breaks. So that's what we'll do is once it gets approved, we'll maybe be able to, depending on the weather, winter break or one of the other breaks. I don't think it's, it's not intrusive to the interior of the building. And so I think that's why we have more flexibility when we be able to do that. We haven't had any, I don't, knock on wood, but we haven't had any operational issues with that unit. We just know it's passed its useful life. So we were fine with pushing it off. It's, it's sort of helped the town's process. So on the operating budget, when we did your final budget approval in March. You know, we were discussing the, the enrollment situation in fourth grade. And we had a plan in that if we felt like we needed to add a section based on how the numbers were coming in. We would fund that teacher through your non-resident tuition fund. So with placement beginning. Administration has decided to add that section to fourth grade. So you will actually be up a section for next year. It'll be twenty sections. So you'll have two group, two grade levels that'll have four sections. First grade and fourth grade. That will give you most of your class sizes in the eighteen to twenty-three range. And I think even more so, we'd already decided that this was the route we were going to go. But I think even more so with the pandemic issue that we're in right now. Class sizes are going to probably come into play. And so it, it, it's prudent that I think that we add that section. You have funds in your non-resident tuition fund to cover the costs of the teacher. So that is not being funded by your operating budget. And then we can assess where we need to go the following year. And, and decide if we need to include it in your operating budget for the following year. With that in mind, the, the building administration has been working on sort of the schedule for next year. And adding that extra section and also taking into account. If you remember that we're adding music into your day schedule versus having that music instruction happen after school where parents. Participate by paying for the lessons. When they put all that in place, they're able to bring the music in. With a point seven versus the point eight that we had in the budget. So we have a little bit of savings from the point one in music. That actually is going to help us. Because adding the section in fourth grade sort of threw the equation off for our FLESS instruction. So we do need to increase our FLESS staffing by point two to be able to accommodate all the sections that we have. And give the regulated. Number of minutes that we have set up in our FLESS programming. But the, we will be able to take care of all of that within our current budget. So we won't be over budget. We have money that we can sort of swing around with the savings from music. And I think we'll make sure we hire appropriately. So that we can fund the increase in the point two. And you already have a staff member in place. Who can step into that additional point two for FLESS. But all in all, I think the schedule and I, I commend. Dr. Brown and her staff for spending the time on the schedule because it is a huge puzzle to put together. But I think what you're able to do is provide a well-rounded. Education in all levels of academics to the students of Pine Hill.
Thank you, Dawn. Do you have any questions?
No, I, I appreciate how much work was put in for that fourth section because I do know that the FLESS is an issue. You know, with that, and I know that does add an extra dimension. So just the fact how you were able to seamlessly work that out is greatly appreciated. And it'll be good for the students for next year. So thank you all. We appreciate that. The monthly financial report, Dawn, is there anything you wanted to address?
Just to give you an update, your financial statements as of April thirtieth now do reflect the transportation savings that you. You approve the amendment at your joint meeting, so that now is reflected in your financials. If you remember, we were working with about a twenty thousand dollar surplus the last time we met. We've tried to encumber almost everything that we know from now until June thirtieth. Take into account the transportation savings. Your operating surplus right now is looking to be in the forty thousand dollar range. So we're hoping to have some funds to be able to return to the town of Sherburne when it's all said and done. Pending any emergencies that we, that could arise that we don't know about. And we're also still waiting to see what the impact is sort of on our utilities. I'm waiting for that bill to see what the building looks like when there absolutely. Really was no one in there for a month. We had daily custodial checks, but other than that, it, it was not occupied. Even at the level that we are in the summer. So we're hoping to have a little bit of savings there. But it probably won't be a significant number. So we're looking at at least being able to turn back something to the town of Sherburne. Come June thirtieth.
Thank you, Dawn. Does anybody have any questions about the monthly financials?
With that being said, we'll move to the next item, which is the proposed changes to the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one student handbooks. And that's Dr. Brown, correct? It's the first read.
Hi, I shared with you a list of the things in the handbook that are updated from year to year because they're specific to faculty names or schedules or building maps, those kinds of things. Our, our school advisory committee, obviously, we haven't met since, since the beginning of March. So we were always conceptually considering things that we should update and change in our handbook. But truth be told, we hadn't really sunk our teeth into that conversation yet. As I look at the handbook, there's, there's nothing, you know, other than, other than revising information about building routines that will equate with the start time change and perhaps a lot of information that may be an addendum to the handbook around COVID-related routines that, that are to be determined. There's no, there's no big procedural changes to the handbook.
Okay, so it was just in some of the wording?
Because I left you a roster of the pages. Anything that, again, is specific to the schedule, specific to naming people such as the school committee or the school advisory committee, all of that will be updated when we're done with hiring and, and all of that. But there's no, there's no big procedural changes. I'm not aware, you know, our attorneys are always advising or as your, as a school committee, as you're updating bullying policy, et cetera, that automatically gets updated in our handbook. But there's no, there's nothing by way of a, a new conceptual idea that we were planning to bring to the handbook.
Okay. And we did-
Something?
Yes, go ahead.
Angie?
Yes.
What Barb said is really important, obviously. Yeah, there will be changes to our procedures next year, no matter what. If we had a regular opening, it really won't be regular because we would still probably be practicing social distancing. There may be markings on the ground. There's, there may be, you know, rules around water fountains, hand washing. There's a great website that I visited today. I think it's, I believe it's International School of Copenhagen. They have an excellent website that listed out all the kinds of rule changes that they're going through as they go into this new online model. We have a lot to chew on, but we would never be able to put that in this handbook. So those kinds of things though, Angie, would be the kinds of information that we would keep the parents well informed of in advance of any kind of opening.
I'm happy, perhaps at December, September school committee meeting to provide specific information to the school committee packet for your knowledge. I just, I, I can't envision yet. We're, our leadership team is spending a lot of time thinking of possibilities. And of course, what's relevant to the handbook will be incorporated.
Well, thank you, Dr. Brown. The other, the next item is the school improvement plan. That's also a first read.
The school improvement plan in your packet, again, through input from our curriculum leaders or our parent advisory group, all of the work that our leadership team does, our faculty, teacher leader teams. We, as I went through our current school improvement plan, I was pleased at how much we were able to attain in the first three quarters of the school year, this current year. But you'll notice, you'll notice that the big tenants that we're working on, we rolled into next year and of course incorporated under the guise of student wellness and innovative teaching, which are sort of the overarching tenants in our school improvement plan, making even more effort to concretize the steps with innovative teaching tools and pedagogical shifts that we're making, in part due to remote learning and in part due to all of the Portrait of a Graduate work and, you know, 21st century learning work that we're doing. So you'll notice that the big tenants are the same. We're working to grow our teachers in their instructional, their workshop model for reading and writing. We are working to incorporate new social studies standards, which was probably the area we made the least amount of progress in this year. We, there was definitely progress. There was K through 12 coordination, but we didn't get to the part where we really nailed down the power standards, K through 12, or I can speak for K through five, that will drive the decisions we make into next year. So that will, those will continue to be big focus areas. It goes without saying that student wellness through responsive classroom, through all of the tenants of challenge success and through best practices and research are all the more important as we reconvene in typical and atypical ways in the fall with our, we reunite our teachers and learners, having all experienced very anxiety provoking unsettling time in history and very fragmented society. And so we, we look forward to really putting our money where our mouth is to make sure that we are leading with wellbeing and student connection in the utmost positive regard and respectful learning, learning communities. I noted some of our benchmarks. We're delighted, we were planning to offer responsive classroom training again this June as we did last June. Last June, we had 15, we maxed out our, the available enrollment with 15 educators from Pine Hill and another 15 from Chicaring. This June, we have to offer it virtually. I personally thought that teachers might be a little overloaded with remote learning and teaching. And that's not the case. We have nearly, we're nearly sold out, if you will, with spots available, including new educators that we anticipate bringing on board. So continuing the structures that we have in place for making sure that we really, like I said, we, we walk our talk with regard to attention for social emotional wellbeing.
I have to say that I remember at the beginning of the year, touring the classrooms that had been redone with all the, you know, bells and whistles to make learning more adaptive for everybody to where we are now. It is a changing landscape. And I would imagine that what Beth was speaking of, the blended learning that she wants for people to perhaps take, you know, advantage of this summer, that would also be included in this. But I commend all the teachers for being able to adapt because we started off with changing up classrooms and now we've had to change the entire way we learn just remotely. So there's a lot to learn. Anybody else for, anything for Dr. Brown? So that takes us to our approval of the minutes for March 10th. And I had to think really far back when I read through those because it seemed like actually a lifetime ago because the whole world just flopped on its head for me. But I did not see any errors. I didn't know if anyone else did. I read through them. Like I said, it was just, it was, it was not that long ago, but yet it seems so long ago. So if you have any corrections or anything that we need to add or change, if you'll let me know now. And if there's not, if I could have a motion and just remember, take your, go off mute and make a motion and you'll state your name and I'll call on you and we can second it. So do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Mike Fitzgerald, motion?
Very good, Mike. And do I have a second?
Nancy Cordell.
Nancy's seconding. And any discussions? All in favor? I'm going to poll everybody. Remember Amanda?
Amanda Brown?
Yes. And Megan?
Megan Page, yes.
Mike Fitzgerald?
Mike Fitzgerald, yes.
Nancy Cordell?
Nancy Cordell, yes.
And Angie Johnson, yes. And the rest of the information in your packet is just for your pleasure reading, the Dover School Committee minutes and the Dover Sherburne Regional School Committee minutes from the 5th, the 3rd, and the 28th. Yes, Beth?
I'm sorry, when you're done with that, last announcement.
So that's it. And so let's go to Beth's announcement because then after that, we're done for the evening. This was perhaps one of the quickest meetings and everybody except Dawn will have a quick commute home. Dawn actually is in the office, so.
So for those, for those of you who aren't done with Zoom yet today and would like to join the Challenge Success webinar at 6:30, I believe you all received emails. It's also on our remote learning website. So it's an opportunity for parents and teachers to learn from Challenge Success their suggestions on how to support our student learning at home. So I will see some of you there.
And also thank you for accommodating that by adjusting the time of this meeting.
Yes, yeah. And I kind of like having it a little earlier. It kind of worked out for all of us. I was just making sure that Mike could join us because he, you know, has, has his day job there that doesn't end sometimes until very late in the evening. So thank you, Mike.
Yes, thanks, Mike.
No problem. Everyone's busy, believe me.
Thank you all for all the work you've put in. And we will see, we have another regular meeting in June and that will wrap us up for this year until we have a summer meeting perhaps to figure out what to do next year. So with that being said, we will adjourn the meeting and it is 6:03. Thank you all.
Thank you.